The same one that's been, what can you do for us? It's been started. I think they say it's like, we give to one, and that's not a good thing. This can only happen to people. But, um, I don't know if it looks like it, but it's like, it's like, it's like, it's like.
It goes on all of us and it goes to the members of that, of that committee to be careful in their email correspondence with one another. Does anybody else wish to make a board report this evening? We do have three administrative reports tonight, starting off with our 2024, 2025 auditor's report delivered from Heather Powell, four of us.
All right. Good to be here to go through the audit results from this year. I don't have anything. I was gonna say, yeah, I think everybody has hard copies of the stuff I'm gonna go over, so I didn't, didn't bring it electronically, so sorry about that. So just a few kind of high level things to talk about first, and then I'll try to point you in the direction of what I'm talking about when I'm talking about it, but we have issued the financial statement audit and issued our report. It does have an adverse opinion on modifiable cruel basis of accounting, which is consistent with previous years, maybe just to kind of circle back with this group to make sure everyone, you know, knows kind of where that stemmed from. So back in the early 2000s, I think, there wasn't a, a new Gatsby standard that was, changed the financial reporting framework, and at the time, the district made a decision that the benefit did outweigh the cost to kind of implement that standard, so it was not adopted as it was written. And so the adverse opinion has, you know, only to do with not adopting that standard and nothing to do with like the financial condition of the district or anything like that, so. There is another report that's issued called the Annual Financial Report, which is what you're required to provide to the Illinois State Board of Education. They also didn't adopt that standard, and so that, the difference, the reason we have a clean opinion on that one and not on the other one is because they prescribe the form that you have to use, and so it's considered regulatory basis. So without getting into too many of the, the weeds, they, they have different opinions, but they're basically the same, you know, information. So that was just a decision made. I guess I will just add that, that this big report that has the adverse opinion is really used mostly for bond purposes, and the Bond Council does not have an issue with that opinion and didn't from the beginning, so that's why the decision was made not to spend the extra money that would have taken to get, get to that point, so. Hopefully that, that helps clear that up. But the annual financial report that we, that is required by the state of Illinois, that will get filed tomorrow, we file that electronically with them, and we'll file that tomorrow after it's approved here tonight, so. So that one has also been issued. Then a couple other smaller reports we issued, one is the consolidated year-end financial report that's required by the state. Mary Ann will take care of filing that one. And then there was a grant-specific audit that we did, and the staff member that's responsible for that will file that, that one with that grant tour agency as well. You may or may not have noticed that we are missing one report this year, what we call the single audit, so it has not been issued yet. That's your audit over your federal funds, and that is no fault of the district, no fault of mine, we can thank the federal government for that one. So every year they issue what we call the compliance supplement, and that is basically our guide for us to know what the federal agencies care about from an audit standpoint and what we're supposed to audit against. And usually gets issued in May, June-ish timeframe, and it's still not issued for 2025. And then obviously, we're in a government shutdown, so they're not issuing it anytime soon. Honestly, I don't think it's their priority when they do come back. So I guess what that means for you is no one in the country is issuing a single audit right now, so you're not alone. The due date for federal audits is not until nine months after your year-end, so it's already not due technically until March 31st of 2026. But when they do issue that finally, this has happened once or twice in my 30 years, but once or twice it's happened, and they typically issue an extension as well. So we have until March already, probably they're gonna, you know, issue an extension for everyone, kind of globally. So there's nothing to be concerned about, there's no reason why we're not issuing it other than we're not allowed to, because that compliance supplement is not made public yet. We've had drafts of it, and so we've done most of the testing that we needed to do, it's just you can't issue it. And like I said, everybody that receives federal funds is in the exact same position, so you all are not alone. We will wait patiently, we have no idea when that will get issued, so. All right. As far as these statements, that you do have the bound version in front of you, really no changes to those this year, there were no new footnotes. There was one new accounting standard, but it didn't apply to you, so you, it didn't get reflected in here at all. Just a few things that I might mention. There were, you know, we always disclose any funds that have expenses over budget, so that's disclosed in Note 13, Transportation, IMRF, Debt Service are those this year. This document that you have also kind of goes through some of the numbers, so. Excuse me. A few things I wanted to mention. These statements that we issue are accrual basis, you all are used to seeing cash basis, so there's some differences from, you know, maybe the numbers that Mary Ann is reporting to you, but if you were just looking from last year's audit to this year's audit, a couple of things you might notice, some of the fund balances might be less than before, and probably a couple of big things playing into this. One, the tax settlement, which you're all aware of, that was paid prior to June 30. So that should be the same in the statements Mary Ann provides, plus the ones we provide. But the other thing is kind of the timing of your local tax revenue payment. So that third, typically you always get the first two distributions before the end of June 30. The third one is kind of, you just don't quite know. The last few years, you've gotten it in July or August, and we take everything through August 31st and bring it back. They're considered current resources, it's a Gatsby thing, but, so we bring those back. This year, that third installment didn't happen until September 17th, I think, mid-September, so they're not reflected in here. So they're gonna look, it's really just a timing thing, it's not that you're gonna get less tax money, it's just they weren't in these statements, so it looks like it's down, right? So I just would mention those kind of two big things that might make it look like fund balances are down, but maybe, you know, it's just a timing situation, so. I wanted to mention that. And then, oh, you did have the two bond issuances this year, so Capital Projects Fund, looks like, you know, it's, it's higher, because there's still some residual money there. And then currently, based on these accrual statements, Transportation and Tort would be the only two that are showing as negative right now. The next slide on the, the expenses, this is just Ed Fund, which also includes Adult Ed, so those expenses were under budget by about 3.3 million. And then the next slide is, is revenue, most all revenue, it's general and special revenue funds, so it's, it's most all. You can see that local actual amount is below budget, and that's the tax payments that we just talked about. State and federal, you know, sometimes that's just a timing situation too with grant money, so we accrue anything that you've spent that haven't, and you haven't been reimbursed for yet. So that's what gets accrued back into these statements, and that just sometimes is maybe you didn't spend as much of a grant that you thought you would in that year, you know, so those, those always tend to fluctuate a little bit as compared to budget. And then working cash, I always talk about the working cash fund cash balance, that was up a little bit this year, that's directly tied to your inter-fund loans, and those were down, they were at 3 million compared to 3.5 million last year, so that just kind of tends to fluctuate based on how much you have loaned out to your other funds. And then the last document you have is kind of just our report of our required communications, so just really quickly to go through that, there were no, what we call past adjustments, no adjustments that we, you know, passed on or didn't make. All the adjustments we do make are based on the conversion from cash accrual, and then we did have a few just reclasses we made for the report. No significant change in your accounting policies, no unusual, um, alternative accounting treatments, and then the management letter is built into this, no new comments from last year, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses, so. All in all, you know, nothing significant that we would need to report to you, so. Want to thank the team, obviously this is Mary Ann's first time fully through, she came at the tail end last, last time, so hopefully, I think it all went smoothly, hopefully she did, did as well. We're back on a October presentation to you all, last year I think we were in November, so that's always good, to get back on a normal rotation, and, you know, once that other report is issued, Mary Ann can share it with you all, and you can see the results of that, but as I said, I don't know exactly when that will be, so. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board members, any questions about our audit? I mean, it seems like similar to past years, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Jennifer, it's you.
I have a question, and you mentioned in, okay, where's my piece of paper? Here it is. You, you mentioned on, I think it was pa, now I don't know if it would be page 47 of this, but page 47 of the stuff that we were sent online, that the deficit annual financial report summary information page, is that, that's something that you did, right?
That's an annual, that's part of the annual financial report, so that's likely just pulling numbers from, and I can come look at what you're looking at, but it's, it's the ISB prescribed form, and it's probably pulling numbers from various places, but.
Uh huh, and, and it said that we are not, and I think I'm quoting, but maybe I'm not exactly, but we are not at one third, it, it says, the auditor, auditor comments that we are unbalanced as to our finance operating funds compared to our debt. But we are not at one-third yet, so we do not need a deficit reduction plan at this time.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's Illinois State Board calculation that it automatically does, and if, in that form tells us, like, if, if you weren't balanced, then you had to do like a deficit reduction plan, but you're not, so you don't have to do that, so that.
Well, it basically says that, that we are unbalanced, but, but we're not quite at a third, and the numbers that I used put us at 3.5, but I'm never quite sure of my numbers. So is the auditor warning us that we're getting too close, or is just this?
No.
I don't know what school district should be at.
Yeah, and I, without knowing exactly what page you're looking at, is it giving you the overall score, like the overall recognition or warning or review, is that the page you're looking at?
It was called the deficit annual financial report summary information page.
Okay, well, I can certainly take a look at that and see what that page is, do you have page 47 on there?
If you want to email me that question, Jennifer, if you want to email me that question, I can forward it on to Heather and then send that back to you guys.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, it would have flagged it in a million different ways if they had to do a deficit reduction plan, and so I just don't, I'm not familiar with that specific line that you're reading, but I can definitely take a look at it, but I feel confident that they did not have to file a deficit reduction.
Oh, no, 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 it didn't say that, I was just, I, I wasn't implying that. What I was asking was, did they flag, did they say that because we're getting too close?
Oh, gotcha.
That was my question.
Okay, I will look at that and see if, if what they consider, what ISB considers close or not close, because some of the schedules.
And, and I know, I looked on the state guidelines, and the state just basically uses that one-third number. I mean, it's not like they warn you at 3.5, but it looked like it was 3.5.
Okay.
And I had one other question, and just, this just kind of stuck out at me because it was such a big difference, and this one is on the statement of expenditures. I'm having trouble with my eyes, my cataract surgery. Statement of expenditures dispersed expenditures, budget to actual for the year ending June 30, 2024, okay. So this is on page 17, and on line 85, other payments to in-state governments, and 600 is other objects. First of all, I'd like to know, what are other objects? And it just stuck out to me because it was such a big difference. And, and I had never, I had done a budget for the district for a while, and I never saw a 600 other objects. I was just curious, what is other objects?
That's like your payment, that's your non-program charges.
Is that payment to other districts, yeah.
I'm sorry.
So I think, are you talking about like the object code 600?
Yeah, what does that mean?
So it would be payments to other districts, let me make sure that I can.
Oh, okay, okay, so, and, and I finally did find, it was, what I was looking at is that it said we paid for, I'm sorry, $4,289,940, and that we had budgeted 374,240.
That's probably our payment for present, right?
That's the payment to Provena, for the, in the education fund, that's the tax settlement payment out of that fund that was not budgeted for, because you didn't know the court was gonna rule that way until.
Right, and the other was all to the, for the Park District.
Yeah.
I, I did figure that out, okay, okay. It was just such a huge difference that it, it caught my eye when I was glancing through.
That's where we put the, the payments to the other government, basically, since they call Carl, since they're tax exempt though, so.
And.
Or Provena, I mean.
Okay, okay, thanks, yeah.
But if you want, if you have that other question, if you want to type it up and email it to me, I have no problem sending it on to Heather if it's something I can't answer.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that language and see if, if I think that's something you guys are getting close to or not.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, any, any further questions? All right, I, I, thank you very much. Next up is our multilingual department update. Madalita Riconi and Joseph Lee Milt will be presenting that to the, to the board.
And Lucia is joining them, I believe, so.
Oh, sure.
Do you guys want an additional mic? I think we're gonna hand you one over. We got extra.
Good evening. As you'll see from the title page, we did include the names of all of the family liaisons in our presentation tonight, because they did all contribute information, so I just want to be clear. In your board packet, I did rearrange some things, so all the slides are there, they just may come sooner than you expected, so I apologize for that. So tonight, we're here to talk, one, to give an update of our department, but also to give the liaison some time to kind of give you an update on the status of our families, our students, and our community, and how we're working together in order to provide supports. And I don't know how to work down stuff, there we go. Sorry. So I just wanted to reiterate the mission and vision that we adopted as a department last year, really focusing on, you know, promoting academic excellence, but also that our students are receiving support to develop fluency and literacy in English. We also wanted to include in this, I will let you read this on your own, but I think the big one that we really want to focus on this evening is looking through our programs, making sure that students' values, languages, and cultures are affirmed while they're acquiring an understanding, appreciation, and acceptance of other cultures, that's really important to us today. So going over the student demographics, I think it's really important for us to have an eye on where our students are. So as of last week, the number of multilingual students we have in the district was 1,037. As you are very aware, the number of students we have in the district is about 4,200, correct, Jennifer? So about a quarter of the students in our district are identified as English learners per the state of Illinois requirements. You can kind of see a breakdown of where our students are housed, and that will kind of help you get an understanding of how we're supporting the students in these buildings. Something exciting is that the number of languages we have represented in the district has gone up since last year. Last year it was around 45, now we're at about 53. The number of accompanied minors that we have this year, I thought was very important for this presentation, for you to know that we have 20 unaccompanied minors between the sixth grade center all the way through the high school. This year, the number of newcomers, and when I say newcomer, I mean recent arrivals this year, has only been 23, and that is a drastic difference from last year. We can speculate lots of different reasons why that might be, but I do want you to be aware that it is substantially less so far this year than it was last year. So an update about our bilingual parent advisory, last year, we invited them to come as well. This year, getting that group started has been a little bit delayed specifically for our Spanish PPE pack, the times that they had scheduled conflicted with strategic planning and other things, so they have not had a formal meeting yet, however, their president, Queixa Herrera Posos, has been very active in making sure that parents have information, engaging with them on social media, and having individual connections with families as well. We were able to have a French bilingual parent advisory meeting already this year, they have a, a community president as well, Kennedy LeFagne, they met on September 20th to have their initial meeting, to address some concerns, as well as discuss their roles and responsibilities. So they will have their next meeting on December 20th. Okay, true.
Okay, so we have just a few district upstate, update slides, which I think might have been later in your packet, if you wanted to find the exact slide, so we apologize for the shifting there. This is just to regard, in regards to staffing, real quick overview, 66 department teachers across kindergarten through 12th grade, and this year only three long-term subs, which is a great improvement in regards to licensed staff in our classrooms, as well as 20 visiting international teachers who come with the fully licensed process through ISB. That's across classroom teachers, PE teachers, and special education teachers. And we have nine stu, nine teachers working towards their full ESL bilingual endorsement and certification through this Elevating Educators Grant, and we are appreciative and thankful for our Human Resources Office for the support and leadership they've provided to help us in moving our staffing forward ba, based off of kind of the, the struggles we had through the COVID years of finding staff and licensed staff, and it's always been a struggle ever since I've been, since we've been in these positions, so we are appreciative of the work that we've done and the leadership from HR. Back to you for the elementary.
Sure, yep. So this is just a general update about the programs in our buildings. At early childhood, this year, we're really excited to be able to offer five sections of Spanish bilingual programming. So what that means is that we have three certified bilingual special ed teachers and early childhood certified teachers, which the excitement in my voice is because those are like finding unicorns that have all of those endorsements and degrees, so the fact that we have three has been amazing, because there are some districts that don't have any. We, in addition, some of those teachers that we certified with ESL endorsements were general ed teachers at early childhood, so now kids that don't necessarily either speak Spanish or are in the Spanish bilingual classrooms at early childhood are still getting their ESL services from an ESL endorsed teacher in the classroom at early childhood, so that's been really exciting for us. We are very fortunate to have parent liaisons for both French and Spanish at early childhood that help bridge that communication gap for our families at early childhood. At King, our ESL teachers continue to provide support through both push-in and pull-out instruction. We continue to be able to offer native language support in Arabic and Mandarin. We are still continuing to seek apostro support teacher or TA, so if you know of anybody, by all means, I have reached out to the refugee center to see if they can help with referrals as well, they do have a person on staff that helps us as a ca, on occasion, but certification can be a little challenging when you're coming internationally, and it can be kind of expensive, so we have been offering that suggestion on how to work with the ROE to do that, it just has unfortunately not given us a result yet. At Yankee Ridge, this year, we have 27 classrooms at Yankee Ridge, four of those are dual language, 20, dual language French, 23 of them are dual language Spanish. Our building is fully staffed, we do not have any long-term subs at Yankee Ridge this year, which is an amazing thing to have that many certified bilingual teachers in the building. And that includes all of our staff that are bilingual, that includes the psychs, the social workers, the office staff, it's been really amazing to kind of build that bilingual community in the building. The building has been focused on best practices throughout all areas, so this is one of the things that I know when Joe and I were planning for the one building, we were really excited about, having every meeting, every conversation, every collab, every PLC is focused on bilingual best practices, which has been an amazing thing to witness and see. We also have two family liaisons who share the family liaison role and the SEAA role that support both French and Spanish-speaking families there as well.
At the secondary level, I, I should have also put an update in there about staffing, but as I just think off the top of my head, I think out of approximately 25 licensed teachers or positions that are dedicated to multilingual classrooms or dual language classrooms, I think only three are long-term subs, which is also a huge improvement at the secondary level, but instead I put just the courses that are being offered specifically at the sixth grade center in UMS, as well as UHS, I think I caught all of them, I caught one late and added that late, but you can, I won't go over those, but it's a wide variety of courses offered either in the target language or as a, in English, structured English as a second language designed courses, or co-taught classes where the gen ed teacher who's licensed in science or math might be co-teaching with a licensed ESL endorsed teacher. So that's just a real quick overview of our sixth grade center, middle school, and high school.
Something I want to add, just because I recently went to a job fair and recruiting teachers, talking to secondary graduates who are graduating with biology degrees but speak Spanish, they were amazed to know that they had, could have the opportunity to teach biology in Spanish or to teach these content areas in Spanish. Having dual language at the high school level is not very present in Illinois as it is elementary, so the fact that we have a fully functioning dual language program all the way through high school is really something to be celebrated, especially for this part of the state. So a couple of questions that I wanted to put there to address from the district were, that we hear, is are we at risk for losing funding for our multilingual and immigrant populations? So for FY '26, we did receive federal Title III funding. Nothing official has been given to me from ISB that we will not be getting that for FY '27. There is speculation, there is concern, my recommendation to anybody about that is to write to your legislators and continue to advocate for that. Thankfully, this funding is supplemental, so it's a way that we kind of provide the icing on the cake for our students, so, but it is beneficial, so, so I think continuing that would be an amazing opportunity for our students and families. Is there a possibility that we will no longer be allowed to provide services to undocumented students? There are lots of legal cases that have precedent that require public schools to provide education to students regardless of documentation standards. We don't ask documentation status when families register. That being said, policy, as, as we all know, can change from one day to the next, and we are at this moment, moving forward as we always have been, that we will continue to provide an education for our students. Okay, so how are we supporting our immigrant families in Urbana-Champaign? I will turn this over to Lucia, I will be happy to support as well, but with this, we asked our liaisons to kind of give an update of how specifically they have been supporting our fa, our immigrant families specifically around some of the political changes that are happening in the community, so.
Can I use the computer? Yeah, that's early childhood, yeah, yeah, thank you.
So I will speak on behalf of the elementary liaisons that have not been here. What you'll see is, you'll see a lot of themes of things that are present in every building. So specifically here, you know, really being, focusing on communication, making sure that we're communicating with families with whatever resource that they might be most comfortable. I know John is, is really excited about our new communication tool, up until this point, we've really tried to meet parents where they are, always referring families to community resources, there are lots of resources in the community that we'll talk about in a moment, not necessarily just around immigrant rights, but also around healthcare, around, you know, sometimes even, I know, resources, I know sometimes Lucia helps with the DMV and things like that, so really making sure that our families have access and that language isn't a barrier. Another thing I want to highlight here is really making sure that we're building those relationships with families, that they know that coming in and talking to us at school is a safe thing to do, that we, you know, are there to meet their needs. See you early collaboration, really making sure that see you early, that, that program focuses on our youngest kiddos from birth to three, and really making sure that those families are getting access to the resources as well. Challenges, fear and uncertainty, is ICE going to come into schools? I think there is not a week that goes by that we don't hear from a community member or a family member that is concerned about sending their child to school because they don't know who has access. The district has adopted a protocol for principals to follow should that happen, so we feel like we're prepared, but sometimes you don't know until it happens, so. Right now, what we can do is assure families that we are gonna take care of their kids the best that we can when they are in our doors. Language barriers continue to be a challenge at early childhood, there are lots of bilingual staff there, but there's always gonna be language barriers, especially when you have 53 languages in the district, and most of our staff, you know, we have at most, you have five languages represented in the district from staff, so. Okay, low attendance when ICE is reported in the area, this happens in all of our spaces, in all of our buildings, and I'll let Lucia talk more on that, but again, that fear. But again, that fear of sending my kids to school when there are sightings in the community.
Can I add something to that one?
Mm-hmm.
So, I wanted to thank Lucia, and I know Principal Valente is not here today, but last week, there were several sightings in the community. And I went over and checked in with the folks at Yankee Ridge because, you know, that fear is a real fear. And I was told that Lucia and Patricia met the buses out in Imaho that morning and that parents were there and thanking them. And that attendance wasn't as impacted as we thought it would be. And I think that speaks very much, though, to the relationships that the staff at Yankee Ridge have, as well as all of our dual-language teachers, not to mention the relationships that they have with administrators and liaisons. To see the principal and see you at the bus stop calmed them.
Yeah. So, from Yankee Ridge, just a couple of things I'll highlight that weren't mentioned previously is, again, they do a lot of home visits. I know all the liaisons do. That's something really important to them, to meet families where they feel safe and comfortable, as well as the Know Your Rights cards distribution has been happening from all of our liaisons. They are bilingual cards that we've been giving families. And Lucia and the liaisons actually did a training for families last year in the fall to kind of prepare them as well. Again, some challenges, that fearing uncertainty is, as I mentioned, prevalent in every building. Resource gaps. Sometimes, you know, families are needing legal aid or things beyond what the schools can directly offer and support. But I will tell you that the liaisons always find a way to support them or get them connected with someone who can communicate with them at these different organizations. Emotional and mental health needs. This is something that has been also challenging and a weight on everyone's shoulders. A lot of our school social works, they're trained for school social work. They're not necessarily trained for dealing with kids and families coming out of trauma and detention. That's a very different kind of trauma. We've been able to work with community organizations that can support us in ways, but this is a very specific kind of support that our families are needing. So, that has been a challenge to get them that.
I don't want to speak for Carla, but I think some of the main points are, you're going to see repeating in all the slides, communication. We have been, I'm not going to lie, it hasn't been, it has been very overwhelming, the number of messages and phone calls that we get through the week and on weekends from parents who are very concerned, who are uncertain about their future, about what they're going to do if something happens to them or their kids. So, I think for the three of us, for Carla, the liaison at Yankee Ridge, and for myself, communication has been one of the biggest changes. We have been able to accept that parents are wanting to hear from us and that they want us to be available when they have those questions. Carla has been doing more work to establish better relationships with the students at the middle school. She has done different activities to be able to make the students feel comfortable with her. And now that she's in two buildings, she, I don't know how she's doing it, but she's been able to balance that really well. Like we mentioned before, there's been a lot of referrals. Later, I want to highlight some of the organizations that I have been working more closely with. There is, as we mentioned, there is a lot of fear. There are some, Carla mentioned about some difficulties or some of the challenges that she's facing, access to some of the barriers. She frequently mentioned that she would love to see the district using just one way to communicate with families. I think the fact that different buildings are using different apps to communicate makes it more difficult for parents, and we have talked about this. If something happens in the community and we need to reach out to parents quickly, we don't have one way to do so to be able to reach everybody. We have to send some messages through one app and then some others through other app. We, as liaisons, use Facebook. We have a group where we post information, but as we know, it's not the most perfect and, of course, it's not confidential. So, we are always careful about what information we post there. She also wanted, she has realized that there is a need for more workshops for parents to understand IEPs and how to advocate for their children and the use of Skyward and other technology. With some of our families who don't know how to use technology, it's a challenge to be able to be updated on their child's progress when they don't know how to use the apps. And attendance. Well, that's one of the things that you hear constantly. Like Lupa mentioned before, there's not a week goes by when we don't hear from a family saying, we're not going to send children, our children, to school because we heard that immigration may be in town. And last week, immigration was in town on Monday. And on Tuesday, I got a few phone calls at the high school from parents with the same message. I decided not to send my kids. We are going to, all of us are going to stay home today. So, attendance has been impacted for sure. So, on the Urbana High School slide, you can see some of the support. You heard before about the Know Your Rights trainings that we have been doing. We did a couple of big workshops in the fall, but we have been doing that. We have continued to do that in a more informal way. Since we're having more communication one-on-one with families, we keep providing that information. I have some of the packages in my car. And just the other day, I stopped by the store and one of the families was in the parking lot and they asked me about it and I had the phone side there to give them. So, I feel like doing it that way in a more, in a smaller, more private way has worked a lot better for a lot of the families because then they feel very comfortable asking some questions. And the documents that we're providing is basically just a suggestion for them to create their own emergency plan. We have been collaborating with the Urbana Free Library. Carol Inskip has been wonderful attending our workshops and coming with us to visit in the neighborhoods to authorize the temporary custody letters for families. And that's one of the most important documents that they can have just in case a family gets separated, the kids have somebody that will be taking care of them. So, we have been doing, we have been coming into the community, working with families that way. We continue distributing food through the Tiger Pantry. Sherry is wonderful at that, keeping the pantry store. And we are now doing deliveries. I had been, in the last few months, I've been doing, I had done probably a handful of deliveries to families who were afraid of going to the store right after they heard immigration was in town. So, the pantry is really useful for that. We still have a closet for an accompanying minors and other immigrant students. But I wanted to highlight some of the organizations that have been really useful in the last few months. Some of them are the Immigration Project. The Immigration Project, as far as I know, is the only organization in town that has attorneys that are providing deportation defense. And that is one of the most useful assistance that people can get after a family member is arrested. So, we are in constant communication with them. Immigrant Services have a lot of different services. But two of the most, two of the services that we are using the most from them is transportation. They are really good about providing transportation to immigrants when they need to go to Immigration Court in Chicago or for somebody who is updating their status and they need to go to fingerprint in Indiana, they provide safe transportation. And for some families, even when they have their own transportation, it's just the fact that going with somebody that is going to be there in case something happens is been very useful. So, they're really good at that. They also receive funding to provide mental health services, which is one of the biggest needs right now. So, we're trying to find a way to collaborate with them more on that, making referrals so our families and students can receive those services. The Refugee Center, as we know, they have been there for a very long time. I don't, I never send families or I never refer families to places that I wouldn't go, but when I need things done quickly and well, I usually call Guadalupe Abreu at the Refugee Center and I send families her way. Last year, I started working with some families who are no Latino, students from Jordan, from Pakistan, Afghanistan, who had had needs. This year, I met a student and an accompanying minor from Congo that we didn't even know that he was an accompanying minor until one day when I was at the office and they were asking for help records from him. So, when, so I collaborate with the Refugee Center that way, usually through Guadalupe Abreu, because I know that if I send somebody, they're going to receive the help they need. The New Americans Welcome Center, we haven't had really a lot of opportunities to collaborate with them, but now they have a new director, Francisco Baites, and I think things are going to change for the better. So, I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to do more collaboration. They are very close to the schools, so that's useful. When a family has any needs related to health, I usually call healthcare consumers, Griez and Adani Healthcare Consumers as bilingual, and they know a lot of our families and they do, they take care of them really well. Latino Partnership is one of the smallest organizations, but it has been here for a very long time. I mean, what with Latino Partnership. And last year, Canida Fay, who I know, everybody knows Canida, she was, she went to the Rotary Club and explained some of the challenges that we were having providing supplies and clothes for an accompanying minors and other immigrant students. And she got a little bit of funding from Rotary Club for Latino Partnership. So, the money went through Latino Partnership and we had students who come with really, who have an emergency or need something that the district cannot provide. Usually, I request those funds. An example is a student from the high school who needed to have, an accompanying minor, who needed to have surgery. He had surgery on both of his feet the first week during the summer, at the beginning of the summer, and he was going to have to stay in bed for two months. So, but he is an accompanying minor. He has expenses. He needed to pay rent. He needed to pay bills. So, we used part of that funding to be able to pay his rent, to give him time to heal. And he's doing really well now. One of the biggest changes that I have, that we have seen in the last months and has been incredibly helpful is now the community has a rapid response team. We didn't have that before. And I, when things started getting more difficult in Chicago, I started getting more nervous thinking, that's going to happen here, that's going to happen here, and we don't have a rapid response team. And by talking to some people, we started in getting organized. I started talking to some of their friends and people who I really trust. And they got a rapid response team organized. And now, we have a really strong team of people who, since this is televised and everybody can see it, I'm not going to share a lot. I'm just going to share that it's a really good team. They're doing a really good job. And it really felt like a really heavy weight was lifted from my shoulders when I, when I knew that they were ready and they started working. Because when something happens or when a family or a parent called me and say, I'm looking at, like last week, really early in the morning, when a parent called me and said, I'm looking at immigration there across the street and there are several cars and several agents, all I had to do was sending the information to the rapid response team and they took care of everything else. So, it's incredibly useful to have them in the community. By talking to people, again, about some of the needs that some of the accompanying minors have, I was invited last year to participate in a panel at Clark Lindsay. And I shared some of the information and some of the needs that the accompanying minors have. And a couple of weeks later, they called me back and they say, we're thinking that we would like to create a team of people who can help provide you some assistance because we see that you are, you're dealing with a lot. And now, we have a group of people who live at Clark Lindsay who are taking care of medical and dental needs of unaccompanied minors. And they have done so much. Most of the unaccompanied minors, if not all, when they arrive here, they have a lot of medical needs and dental needs. As you probably know, dental, dental needs are very hard to find providers here in the community. Well, they have done it. They went out and they talked to dentists and they talked to doctors and they had been able to provide those services to unaccompanied minors who wouldn't be able to get them otherwise. Most of the unaccompanied minors that they're seeing are already eighteen. So, they are able to provide transportation. We, my part is arranging the appointments and the times when they're going to get picked up and they take up everything else. So, some of the unaccompanied minors who were dealing with pain for months or probably years from dental needs are being taken care of now thanks to this team. Yoo Yoo Churches has had a collaboration with us for years. They provide backpacks and supplies, especially for unaccompanied minors, but since the number we know now is getting smaller, we are using some of the backpacks for other students who need them as well. I'm also part of the Latino, a part class Latino advisory meetings, and it's always useful to meet with other Latinos in the community who are providing services just to hear the challenges they're facing and how we can work together to solve them. As you know, I organize the visit of the Mexican consulate to Urbana every year. This year, the visit was canceled because of lack of funding on their part, but we are ready and planning a date for next year. And I'm in contact too with the Guatemalan consulate. And they share information useful for the community here. And one of the things that also has been very useful is being in communication with immigrant organizations in Chicago. With everything going on there, hearing from them who are in the ground about things that are working for them has been very useful. Some of the challenges. As I mentioned before, we have several unaccompanied minors. They, and it's been a little difficult to get close for them. When, when they get here and I register the students and I complete the McKinney-Bento form, I usually mark the services they're going to need. And right after, I start working on that. I start coordinating services. I start coordinating appointments. I contact my groups to be able to make sure that they have them on their list if they need medical services. But it takes longer to get close for them. I acknowledge that it's difficult to get close for students who you don't really know. It was really useful when I was able to go to the store and buy clothes myself because I know how they look like and I know the sizes that they are wearing. So, they close it. And a few times, I actually took the students with me. So, they were able to choose something they wanted to use. I always feel horrible to give them something that I know and I feel like they're not going to use based on what they usually wear to school. So, it's been a little challenging to get access to clothes. And also for other immigrant students, as I mentioned before, I'm working with now with students from other countries who are not unaccompanied minors. They have families here, but their families are struggling and the students come to my office. They see other students coming to my office, so they come to my office. And they have a sign with different, with a welcome word in different languages. So, they come to my office and ask for help. But it's been hard when they ask me for clothes and, or say, I'm cold. I don't have any hoodies. I don't have any jackets. And we don't have a direct way to get that. It's also getting a little complicated to coordinate services for all of the unaccompanied minors and other students. It just takes time. I think the word, I wanted to find a good way to explain that. It's just time. We are already doing a lot of other different things and this is just another layer of things that we're doing now. And with all the stress with immigration enforcement, I feel like we are all trying to get everything done quickly and it doesn't happen that way. And the fear in the community, it's been very, very heavy to be hearing from parents and students constantly about the way they're feeling. And they are looking for reassurance that everything is going to be okay. And we cannot give them that. So, it's been, I often worry about Carla. She's younger, about other liaisons who are younger and that have to be carrying this concern because it is very, very constant. People will go to people that they trust and in these cases, it's us. So, it is, it is very, very heavy. What is next? Is that you? Oh, you have a, I asked some of the, I didn't want to speak for them, so I asked some of the organizations that we have been collaborating with them more often to just send a little blurb of the services they provide for immigrants right now facing fears or in case they, they have a family member detained. So, in the few next slides, you can see the information that they send. I'm not going to read to that, but the information that they send is there. I wanted to make sure that you hear, that you heard from them. I also forgot, on my slide, I forgot something really important. We had a huge collaboration with the Legal Clinic at U of I. They have been coming to the school twice now every year and they provide legal services for unaccompanied minors. We had the Legal Clinic last Friday. And every time they're here, you can, you can see that the kids light up after talking to them and hearing, okay, something is, you can do something. Something is possible and you can be protected, especially because these are children that are here alone without their parents. Is that, do you have any questions for me? Or for any of us, sorry. Are you done? Oh, you're done, yes.
Board members, any questions? Go ahead, Sherry.
Just looking at the slides, I had a question before you even spoke regarding liaisons for the elementary schools. With the number of children at LEO, Dr. Williams, and Thomas Payne, who provides support for them? Because there's nobody that I could see that's assigned to those schools and that was about over sixty students.
So, Dr. Williams does have a liaison.
Does.
That person resigned three weeks ago-ish. They had the position. They don't have a person right now.
She, she was in school to become a sped teacher and she's excellent and we really needed her in the classroom. She was good at everything, so we need to clone her.
King has a liaison.
No, not King. It was LEO and Thomas Payne.
Yeah. Oh, in regards to multilingual support at those buildings, um, the elementary liaisons, uh, Jean Flore and Kenya, actually provide support to the additional buildings when needed. So, there will be, um, needs for MTSS meetings or things, and they're there to interpret. Um, my coordinator, Lily Jimenez, also provides support at those buildings to families, um, especially at Thomas Payne regarding, uh, our dual-identified kiddos that are in the programs at Thomas Payne. In addition, our ESL teachers that are at those sites as well also provide support to families.
Okay. Being in the high school too, that I, I see some of the students, and I know the, um, the students who work the hardest are the unaccompanied minors, because they're the ones who say, "Well, after school, I can't take food because I have to go to my job." So, I was wondering if there's a way to get some of the funding, because if you have a specific job, you usually need specific clothing, and you need it that day. You need certain shoes to wear if you're working food service, or certain pants at the restaurant. So, is there any way we can get some of the funding or some of the supplies over to the high school so that it's readily accessible?
So, none of our grants pay for food or clothing specifically, unfortunately?
No, as far as the McKinney Vento funding.
Oh, well, that is a good question for Deion. No, they don't pay for food.
No, I'm not talking about food. I'm talking about clothing.
Clothing.
Yeah.
Well, so I'll repeat that since it's not on the camera. So, our, one of our district leaders who support many McKinney Vento is in the audience, and we can pay for clothing for school, not for work. I know we, um, have the Red Shoe Fund that our social workers also utilize in the buildings, but that is also for, um, clo- clothing, like socks, underwear, backpacks, supplies, um, things like that. So, I don't think we have utilized that funding unless the Rotary would like to designate that we can. I know that's not ever been something that we've talked to the Rotary members who donate to the Red Shoe Fund to do that, but that is definitely a need that we can take to them and see if they will.
Well, I mean logically, if they're going to work right after school, they're wearing those clothes to school and to work. And it's so, it'd be something that they would be appropriate for them to wear all during the day, so.
But not like a uniform, right?
No, no, I'm just talking about black pants or jeans or, uh, a certain type of hard-soled shoes.
Sure. Like, I see our kids at Jimmy John's. They work all over the place, and something like that, they're not gonna wanna walk around it.
Right. So, um, I was just gonna ask you, Lucy, if this, my question is, do you think that there's a second parent liaison needed for the high school with 257-plus students there? Or, um, what's, what's reasonable as far as what, how many families you can assist?
I don't know how to answer that. I, I have seen, when I'm at the office, um, I have seen a need, uh, to have somebody else who, not necessarily somebody who speaks a different language, but somebody else that are just helping. Uh, the reason why I started assisting the kids from Afghanistan and Jordan and, um, now Congo, is because they needed help, and there was, uh, no one else actually able to do it or had time to do it. Um, and I don't mind. It's just that it does take time away from other things. Every week, I made my goal of this week, I'm gonna call the parents who said they wanted to meet and organize, uh, an event or just meet for coffee and talk. And then Friday comes, and I didn't have time. Um, it just, it's hard to answer, but I, I will always say, yes, uh, more help is needed.
Well, I think the communication is the hardest part. Maybe having some type of translator, especially when they walk into the high school, um, on Iowa Street, to have some type of translator or have that, a person who's there to translate, what do you need, who do you need to speak with and why? Because there were two, two women were waiting for a while when I got there this, this afternoon that needed help. And John and I talked about this too regarding, and this is a question also for all three of you, is that are there families that, or parents that do, aren't given literate in their own home language? So, you can give them whatever app they want, but unless it's speaking to them at the same time, they're not gonna get that information. And that was a question I posed to John, if there was some way that we can include that as well.
So, what I will mention, that I don't think, um, the buildings are quite aware that they're here yet. Uh, through Title I, Tanya Deacon recently purchased some devices called Pocket Talks that Lucia has kind of been piloting this past year with some of our Kazakh families, and she has loved it. Um, so, these devices will actually be spread throughout the district for the office staff, for admin to be able to use. Um, I think it has access to maybe about 100 different languages, um, Poshto being one of them, which was very beneficial for us. Kazakh being another one at the high school where there's a lot of students. So, we're really excited to roll those out too.
Can I add? I was, I was trying to get Deion's attention. I think she's communicating. I'm gonna go ahead and jump in. So, um, in addition to, to answer your question, I think our SEAA is our Student Engagement Attendance Advocates can also be an additional person, like at the high school is Mr. Jack. And, um, having that per, they're not just, attendance is a huge part of what they do, but attendance, intruency, all of these things that we're talking about, food insecurity, clothing, um, not having their needs be met, are also things that impact wanting to be at school and wanting to be engaged while you're at school. So, I think the things that you're talking about, um, and all of our schools have SEAA's, those, um, more, um, non-traditional attendance things are also things that we get credit for in the truance, um, alternative, uh, alternative, the TEAP grant. Um, they work with small groups. They can go do home visits. They can be another, uh, person to, you know, like, we encourage them not to go to home visits by themselves. They're another person who could go on a home visit with Lucia or one of our parent liaisons or our social workers. So, they're another resource that I think our schools should be tapping into more.
Any other questions? From anyone?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Um, thank you for everything that you're doing. It is such an important, um, thing that the kids really need and the community needs, and I wish more people were here to do it. So, I really appreciate everything y'all are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, again, echo the boards. I think all of us up here are grateful for everything that you're doing for this, this, this community that's been, is under assault right now. And, um, I guess the question is, if, 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 if somebody wanted to donate, if somebody, if anybody out there would like to do more, how could they go about doing that?
Thank you for asking. Um, I would love to find a way for us, and Carla mentioned this too. Um, I think both of us would love to have access to some type of funding. We don't have funding to help, uh, to buy clothes for students. We don't have funding to buy, if a student that has surgery needed medicine and he didn't have the money to buy it. We don't have funding for that, for those type of emergencies. Um, we are getting very good about referring families of students to organizations, and we now feel comfortable pushing the organizations. Uh, they need this now. Um, but it will be a lot easier for us if we had some access, direct access to some type of funding. And it can be very well established what the funding is gonna be used for, but, um, like I say before, it's hard to, it's hard to get clothes, because there are several steps that we have to follow to be able to get the clothes. And it usually takes between two weeks and a li, maybe a little more. And then the clothes, the clothes that I got didn't fit. So, I have to send them back and wait until they send me a new ones. And it's getting colder, so the kids need the clothes now. But it will be really, it's, uh, really wonderful if we can have, not just me, um, Carla, uh, the liaison at Yankee Ridge, um, if we could have some more direct funding or access to funding for that type of thing, um, mostly emergencies. When we see a kid that is, like, really shivering because he's cold and we don't have anything on his size, then we don't have to go anywhere looking for clothes. We can just grab some, a card and go buy something for that student. Um, we're really good about using what we have, but is what we don't have access to what is making it more complicated. Did I answer your question?
No, you did. I'm, this is, yeah, exactly. I'm trying to think, think through solutions. But that's something we're gonna have to discuss as this goes forward.
Sure.
Whether or not we could set up some sort of a, a funding mechan, external funding mechanism or, or what, but, um, that's something for us to, to look, to look into.
Yeah, I mean, people can send donations. Um, you know, we can report them in the board report like we would for anything else. Um, we have on the web store, we could create a link. So, we've done that, you know, when the band is raising money for different things or the choir or some special event, we can put, we can add an additional pay source on our web store. So, people could, you could just share that link with people, and people would go to the web store. Then they can do debit credit, send us a check, I mean, things like that. So, that might be an additional.
I think right now, as the weather's getting colder, if anyone has well-loved coats that you would like to donate, we will happily take them.
I was gonna say, you know, there are a lot of us, me included, I have two boys, and we, we take, when we shift seasons, we take stuff to Salt and Light. And I'm not saying that isn't a great option or to goodwill and things like that, but many of us probably could just put that stuff in totes and bring it to work and wash it. And they're well-loved, but they're, they're warm and they're, you know, still good clothes. So, I bet there are a lot of us that could do that.
Yeah, Lori was asking about sizes. I think you will find that we have kiddos all sizes, all heights, all shapes, all everything that could benefit from gloves, hats, um, anything as the weather gets colder.
Most of the unaccompanied minors wear smaller sizes though. Um, and it's, it's kind of hard, like I mentioned before, because, um, I know they wear, or, or one of them told me I wear medium. But then I got a medium hoodie, and it was really big on him. So, it's medium in a specific fits, but, so, um, but they usually, it's usually between medium and small, uh, for unaccompanied minors, cause they're really short.
If I have something to, to, to bring or to donate, would I just bring it up to the high school or where somewhere that would be a good drop-off location for something like that?
To the high school, and if you could add my name or as a, uh, office, um, that it is for, um, for me. We have two closets. One of them, um, is managed by somebody else, and the one that we have at the, at the high school, Carla and I have some clothes there for middle and high school students, but she also has smaller closets in her office at the sixth grade center and at the middle school. So, we, we check the clothes, and then whatever we feel like is gonna have to go to a different, one of her closets, then we send it that way. But if you bring it to the high school, uh, that would be great. Thank you. And I would love to, uh, whoever can develop something like that, a way for us to receive donations, so we can advertise that.
Very handy. And I can do that pretty easily. Just add a link to the web store.
That would be, that would be very useful.
I also think, uh, and I know I'm just chiming in here, but if this would be helpful, I can reach out to Salt and Light. I was gonna suggest that. Maybe we could create a program where, um, if any kid that's recommended by an administrator, by a liaison, that they could be accompanied to Salt and Light and anything that they wanted to get clothing wise, they could have. And they'd be able to pick and choose just for another option that's right there, and it wouldn't necessarily have to be storing it.
That's a great idea, like a shop with a cop. And then we could do shop with a, oh, yeah.
I know that it's, I mean, I mean, no kid necessarily wants used clothing, but I shop there and get stuff there all the time. It's ni, I mean, they have some nice things. So, I, I can do that tomorrow and see if there's any way to be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Angie, it's vintage, not used.
Well, not only that, they have food there as well. So, that would be a, a great resource. They have, like, kitchen supplies or things that might be needed to cook food or anything. So, yeah, yeah. We were just talking about it.
Kitchen supplies you can get from ISCO, from Immigration Services.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, we also were able to get some beds, and the bed that the student who had surgery, we realized the day before the surgery that he was sleeping in the floor. We thought, okay, you're not gonna be able to get off the floor with the surgery, after the surgery. So, we were able to get a bed from them. Yeah, they're always very, very, very graceful and, um, love to help.
And I wonder if, um, some sort of communication with First Presbyterian Church in Urbana, um, because they have that, and I think it's called Twice is Nice. I, I, I don't go to church there, but, um, I know that they have the secondhand program, and I think they'd be happy to work with you.
Okay.
And I, and I tell you what, I will, um, I know the clerk of the session over there, so I will call him.
Thank you.
And, and could I give him your phone?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, this has been a good discussion. Anyone else? Thanks again. Really appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Um, our last administrative report of the evening is our kindergarten transition report from Kelly Allen.
Hey, hi, everybody. There's a few new board members, so I'll do a quick introduction. I am Kelly Allen. I am the district's kindergarten family engagement and kindergarten coordinator. Um, I spend a lot of time doing transition work with our kindergarten students. Um, so I'll go into a little bit about what all that entails and what that looks like. Um, I was a special ed case manager at Yankee Ridge for 14 years, and I've been at Central Office doing this, um, position for four years. Um, and you'll see how that kind of blends nicely into my current role and, and what I currently work with. So, in this presentation, you'll hear some details about my role and what those tend to look like. I will talk a little bit about kindergarten transition leader roles and responsibilities and who that is and what they look like in the schools. Um, and then we'll go over current kindergarten screening data, um, throughout the district and each school. Um, so specifically, um, in my role, I work through family engagement, and I prepare handouts to give families during family engagement events such as Shetty Rhodes Day, Champagne Urbana Day, Read Across America Day. Um, and then there's some handouts that I prepare for them. Um, just as an example, there's the kindergarten frequently asked questions, um, you're on your way to K handout, and everything I do is translated into French and Spanish and available for all families. I also provide families with materials and supplies to practice academic skills at home. I work directly with Catherine Tellez, our Director of Communications and Marketing, to update and maintain the kindergarten webpage. And I collaborate with Deion Webster, Director of Family Student Supports and updating the Urbana School District's Community Resource Guide. Academic support that I provide, I push into all kindergarten classrooms to support the kindergarten teachers and assist with classroom management, classroom routines, which can include lining up, transitioning from seats to carpets, what sitting looks like, raising hands, moving throughout the classroom, using supplies, walking in the hallway, peer interactions, all what seems like very, very small things, but when there are 18 to 22 littles in a classroom, it is, is a lot of interactions, um, as well as set and modeling expectations. I observe students to identify those who may need additional academic or behavioral support. I create weekly schedules to provide additional academic support to groups of students daily in all kindergarten classrooms on improving kindergarten readiness skills such as name recognition, name writing, letter recognition, letter sounds, number recognition, and writing, as well as rope counting. Again, seems basic, but a lot of our friends come in with no prior school experience, um, and we're starting with those skills bottom up. Support that I give to the kindergarten teachers will look like, um, attending kindergarten grade level meetings at both building and district levels to provide support to teachers, problem solving, and providing suggestions for academic and behavioral needs. I have facilitated professional development at the district level on phonemic awareness and other literacy components. I provide instructional support through the use of peer-to-peer observation, video and reflection, targeted focus areas, as well as planning. I also share resources with teachers via our Google Drive on topics such as academic skills and kindergarten readiness, behavior support techniques which may involve check-in, check-outs, charts, schedules, task scripts, individual incentive charts. I also provide fellow teacher examples and lessons and instructional activities. Other support that I provide through kindergarten is, uh, the screening that we do on all incoming students. Um, and this will provide a baseline snapshot of individual readiness skill levels. I review all of that screening data with classroom teachers and kindergarten teams. And then that data is used as a tool to assist with balancing classrooms and gives classroom teachers a starting point for academic instruction and student groups. I also collaborate with the kindergarten transition leaders in each building to discuss the kindergarten classrooms within each of their buildings. This is a time for them to work together, share ideas around curriculum and student supports. And it's also a time to problem-solve, brainstorm, and suggest plans for academic supports that may be needed in order to maintain academic success for all of our learners. I also attend all of the kindergarten transition meetings that are held at Urbana Early Childhood School in the spring, as well as head I also attend all of the kindergarten transition meetings that are held at Urbana Early Childhood School in the spring, as well as Head Start. Um, I take notes and then share all of that with the incoming school teams. Um, and these meetings allow the receiving kindergarten schools and teams a chance to meet with the current teachers, review IEP plans, determine what is needed for student success, um, and for the families to ask any questions pertaining to kindergarten and school-specific plans. I also observe incoming kindergarten students at Urbana Early Childhood School and Head Start in the spring. Uh, and again, I provide these notes and these narratives to the incoming teams, um, to give them a better understanding. Um, I watch different student interactions with peers as long as staff, notice what supports are used, and even have conversations with the incoming students, um, to get that little bit more of a personal feel for who's coming in to see us. Other transition support includes assisting, um, planning for all of the kindergarten open houses at all of our elementary schools in the spring. This includes all incoming families and they have the opportunity to come into all of our buildings, meet the K teams, the building administrators. Um, and it allows parents to receive support and, um, specific questions for each building as they're all just a little bit different. They'll get a tour of the buildings, um, and if needed, we have options to register that nights for all of those buildings as well. Um, new students will have time to meet the teachers in a fun atmosphere, see their new classrooms and listen to stories. Um, and do different activities that are provided. Open houses are planned within each of the buildings and those activities do vary from school to school. And the open houses are planned intentionally on different nights so that I and different administrators can go to each of the buildings. Um, those are often held in late April and early May. Uh, one of the big jobs I do is kindergarten registration, so I do all of my flyers for, um, each registration event is a little different. I have all of them translated into Spanish and French and distributed throughout the different elementary schools, Urbana Early Childhood School, Head Start, neighboring daycares, preschools and other private centers, um, and then the flyers are attached. Um, these are pictures of the registration just this past year in April, um, the setup and different families registering. Kindergarten readiness, each year incoming kindergarten students receive a kindergarten readiness bag thanks to Altrusa. Altrusa makes an annual generous donation to Urbana School District one sixteen, which helps create the bags for incoming kindergarten students. These bags vary from year to year, but it can include items such as pencils, crayons, scissors, books, alphabet cards, number cards, letter magnets, sensory fidget toys, Play-Doh, kindergarten readiness handouts and more. New this year, I included a parent resource folder, so members from Altrusa came and they helped stuff over three hundred bags and two hundred folders for our new families, um, and some of those parent resources include a kindergarten frequently asked questions, some literacy snapshots and activities to do at home, as well as just things, checkpoints that you should be looking for as your child is ready for kindergarten. Altrusa is an international nonprofit organization making our local communities better through leadership, partnership and service. And we definitely thank Altrusa for their time and service to getting all of these bags ready. It's always a fun few hours, they come into the office, um, and help stuff, and it's, it's a fun time. Um, and it's a couple pictures of them actually using the bags at registration, it's a good opportunity for kids while their parents are doing all the paperwork, to go through their bags and find their letters and practice looking at those cards, it's playing with the Play-Doh, it's fun. Through kindergarten registration, I organize kindergarten, um, events around, registration events around the community over several months in order to reach more families. The goal is to register as many families before the start of the school year in order to better prepare teachers and families. Um, and so this is just a quick breakdown of the different events that I did this past year. At Urbana Early Childhood School in the spring, I sit at parent teacher conferences um, and register families as they're into, have those conferences with their teachers, and I was able to register fifty-five families that night. Or between the night and the morning of, um, that's the largest number I've ever had at that event specifically. At Head Start, I go to the Urbana Head Start and sit while their conferences are also being, uh, coordinated, and I registered seven families there. Which is also an increase from last year, I only had three families then. I have my main registration event from Leighton Square Mall, that's in April, I registered eighty-two families this past spring, which was lower than the previous years, I've had at least about ninety-five to a hundred families over the past three to four years, so that was a little bit lower. Uh, and then the past two years, I've done an Orchard Downs Parent Information slash Registration Event. Um, and only two families registered this year, but none last year, so just a small increase as well. Um, then of course, we're at centralized registration at middle school, um, in late July. One of my other roles is I coordinate the kindergarten readiness camp and first grade jumpstart summer program. Um, I collaborate, plan and organize both of these programs. I create letters, flyers and permission slips for all of the teachers and families, again, translated and sent out to those that need all of those. I collaborate with first students for all of the bus services for those students that qualify for both camps. And then I collaborate and communicate with all the families that we have coming in and tell them their bus pickup times and drop-off times and locations. Prepare the job postings and facilitate the hiring for certified and non-certified staff for both camps. I collaborate with Quest Food Service for breakfast and lunch menus for the week. I collaborate with payroll and human resources to ensure proper payroll processing. Communicate with families and the district nurse regarding student allergies, health concerns, action plans and the nurse schedule. I prepare a staff handbook and facilitate staff training the week prior to camp. Maintain student registration and attendance records for that week, as well as supervise both camps. Kindergarten readiness camp, the purpose of is to provide students and families with resources and tools to prepare for kindergarten. The camp is open to all incoming kindergarten students, including two, but not limited to students from early childhood Head Start, private preschools and those with no prior school experience. This is a quick breakdown of camp over the last four years. Um, it is growing, so we started in twenty twenty-two with twenty-three students in one classroom. And this past summer, I had forty-four students in three different classrooms. Uh, each classroom, the goal is to have one certified staff and one to two support staff per classroom. And then I always try to make sure we have Spanish-speaking staff and French if applicable, um, per classroom. And then I do the same thing for first grade, uh, jumpstart as well. And then just a small breakdown of the demographics to see, um, if there's any trends or, or numbers differences for who's attending, and that's usually, um, pretty even in terms of year after year breakdown. Camp this year was an overall attendance rate of seventy-one point four percent, um, breakdown from, from all the days. There are three rooms that we had, our teachers and support staff per room. And the purpose of first grade jumpstart program is to prepare incoming first grade students with the foundational skills they need to be successful in first grade. Students whose current data shows they need additional support to be academically prepared for first grade are invited to participate in the first grade jumpstart program. This was only my second year doing the first grade program, um, the attendance was higher. But it's, um, originally it was a recommendation only by the teachers based on their scores, uh, for their current data. Um, but we're not getting as many of those students participating, so this registration, I did open that up to more first grade students to allow more to attend. Next year, I think I will take out the recommendation piece and just do a first grade record, like, join just like I do for the KR camp and have that open registration available for all families that are interested in attending that. Both camps run simultaneously, it's a full five-day week program, it is just half-days. Um, and again, they run, um, simultaneously, I have three kindergarten rooms and then the first grade rooms. For first grade, I tried to do one certified teacher and one support staff versus the two support for the kindergarten rooms. Those are the two first grades. And then the two camps altogether. In each building, I have a kindergarten transition leader, this used to be called the kindergarten transition teachers. Uh, and that verbiage was kind of confusing for some folks and they thought it was like their only role. But these are certified full-time employees, this is a stipend position. Um, so each kindergarten transition leader receives a one thousand dollar per year total, uh, prorated stipend on completion of all their duties. Um, and it may be split between two staff per building, only one of my elementaries will split that. And that's by choice, they just choose to ask for a partner to do that with, otherwise the other four, it goes to one teacher. Um, we have quarterly meetings that meet after school for an hour and kind of just update. Um, but their role is to create a smooth transition for kindergarten students from early childhood, again, from any of our preschools, home daycares, into our kindergartens. Some of their roles, um, include assisting with transitioning students into classrooms during the start of the year, including being in the classrooms when students arrive, helping students separate from their families, reassuring students and families, answering questions and being that familiar face to students. Um, again, this is stipend, so they are certified, so of my five, two are full-time teachers, they're kindergarten teachers, uh, otherwise they're tier-one support teachers. Um, and they have a little bit more flexible time in the beginning of the year, so they're able to be in the classrooms um, versus the teacher being in just that, their one room. They provide resources to kindergarten families at various district events such as back-to-school night, open house and curriculum nights. And then they attend and work at their respective school tables for kindergarten registration and assist with screening and family interviews. They also, um, set up informational tables at spring conferences, including information on kindergarten readiness skills, how to help prepare for kindergarten, activity countdown calendars, school-specific information, registration information. They send a welcome letter and their contact information for each school. And then they host that open house in the spring, and they provide students and families with books and materials to help prepare them for kindergarten. They also will help me do their spr- spr- screenings in the spring, um, late summer and in the fall. And then they will enter their scores into their screening spreadsheet, and that spreadsheet is shared with all kindergarten teams, administrators and district leadership. They attend quarterly meetings with me to discuss and current support services, curriculum questions and problem solve. Uh, and their intent of these meetings is to assist with enhancing, uh, kindergarten growth and success, to see progress as our young learners develop over time, not only within academics, but as social, emotional learners as well. And I will show you some charts to go over the screening. And I will start with an info, this is a quick snapshot of what my screening assessments, um, overall scoring looks like. Um, and this is done for any incoming kindergarten students. And their screenings are done in their native language for English, Spanish and French. It is completed in late spring, late summer at registration, or if they miss all of that, they can get screening done within the first two weeks of school. Um, I screen at early childhood, the school teams will come over as a group and screen their incoming rosters. Um, again, and then they help me support at registration events throughout the summer, or they can come screen with me at central office by appointment. Um, and again, the screening is just to gain a data point for schools to assist with balancing classrooms. Teachers use this to prepare their plans for the start of instruction, um, and for them to show a small glimpse of their learning as we start kindergarten. On the screening is three components, two of which are scored. So literacy and math have scoring rubrics that we, uh, will go through with the students. Literacy, um, there are tests for letter naming for upper and lowercase letters, letter sounds, beginning sounds. And then a new piece this year we added was to label the picture. And this gives us a good way to just get the skills and their vocabulary, labeling pictures, what do they see, just a, a little conversation to have with them versus just naming letters at us. Um, and it's, it's a fun piece, cause they really do open up, they feel comfortable talking about what's in the picture, it's common, it's, it's a picture of a park scene. And they really do relate to that, and they have a lot of conversation with us in, in that moment. For math, we screen on oral counting, number identification, one-to-one correspondence and number writing. And then there's some observational tools that we use within that screening that we just take notes on, we don't score it, there's no points given to it, but it is the name writing. We're looking for the grip, letter formation, are they independent at writing their name? For cutting, we look at, they have to cut out a circle on a whole eight and a half by eleven. And we're looking at how do they hold the scissors, do they turn the page on their own, are they on the line? And then I incorporated a little new piece this year with the team, we decided to incorporate some of our new language curriculum from CKLA. We incorporated the writing strokes, just to see if they can follow, starting at the top, going to the bottom, can they follow the squiggle lines, can they copy these shapes? Um, again, just observational, no scoring component to that piece. So overall, our district-wide screening data, uh, red is our low scores, yellow would be the medium and green would be the meeting or exceeding. Um, so overall forty-seven point eight of our two hundred and seventy-four students that were screened, scored in the red zone, thirty-two and a half percent scored in our yellow range. And then nineteen point seven percent scored in our green range. And this leads to a district total screening average of one point six one, the highest you can get on a screening is a three point oh. And the next few were just individual school charts. Dr. Williams, um, fifty-one point three percent in the red range, thirty-eight and a half percent were in that medium range. And then ten point three percent scored in the green. For Leo's screening data, out of their forty-one students, screened of twenty-six point eight percent were in the red range. Forty-three point nine percent were in the yellow range and twenty-nine point three percent were in the green range. At Dr. King, out of our fifty-seven students, we had forty-two point one percent in the red range. Thirty-six point eight percent in the yellow range and twenty-one point one percent in the green range. At Thomas Payne, we have fifty point eight percent in the red. We have twenty-eight point eight percent in the medium and the yellow range, and then twenty point three percent, uh, in the meeting in the green range. At Yankee Ridge, we had fifty-two point nine percent in the red. We had twenty-six point five percent in the yellow and twenty point six percent in the green. Again, noting that that is in their home language, their native language when they come into school. These scores also, it's important to note that this is compiled in the first twenty days of school. Um, and since then, we have had an increase in student, um, numbers. So these, uh, sixty-eight is lower than what they currently have, but that's for all of our schools, their, um, numbers have gone up just a little bit and increased. And that is the, um, questions.
Thank you, board members, any questions? Go ahead, Jennifer.
Um, I was wondering, do you keep track of the incoming kindergarten data based on where they're coming from? Like, are they coming from early childhood, are they coming from, um, you know, home? Not, are they coming from another, um, or, you know, nursery school setting? And I wa- I was wondering if we keep track of that data?
Yeah, I can pull based on if they were from early childhood, um, and then if it's labeled and tagged. Um, and then if it's labeled and tagged as a Head Start student or no preschool student, then we could pull that just by managing the others and pulling them out.
Okay, and I guess what I'm wondering is, can we figure out if we are really getting the students in early childhood who need that boost? Do we have a lot of students, very many students, who aren't coming from early childhood, who are scoring pretty low?
Yeah.
And so I'm wondering, you know, about that.
Yeah. Yeah, I could pull that information to see how many are in preschool and, and receiving those services.
Mm-hmm. And, but you don't have anything off the top of your head that you could tell? Oh, okay.
Not off the top of the head.
Okay, okay. Well, maybe early childhood has that too.
Yeah, I can look into it, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Good question. Go ahead, Sheri.
Well, I'm wondering how this data compares to previous years, if there's been, uh, increase or decrease in the number of students who test in those different areas.
The numbers itself, in terms of scorings, it's like that score, yeah, that has gone down. Um, our average being a one point six one is a lower score than previous years, yeah.
So if they're starting lower, I mean, is it reasonable to, for us to have goals of them achieving a certain amount in, um, at the end of the school year? I, I did do, um, kindergarten online during COVID, so I saw what the teachers were doing and, and they weren't, children weren't expected to know the beginning sounds or all that. I mean, that was something that they could attain, but the skills that, um, are assessed for readiness skills, uh, to learn that, um, how have you seen that changed at all?
Over a year, over the, over the year, we can check those through the M-class data and those academic scores.
No, when they first enroll, have you, have you seen a difference in just the readiness skills?
No, um, that has also just kind of taken a low curve. Um, our kids are coming in not knowing school at all. Um, behaviorally, our students are very challenged right now. We're having a lot of academics being put on the back burner because our behaviors are so very high. Um, and I, I won't say in every classroom, but, and there's a handful of kids that are really, really struggling behaviorally right now. Um, and so that's been just the forefront of my support for a lot right now.
Um, I also see a range in the attendance or in the, um, enrollment in the kindergarten classes, ranging from fourteen in a classroom up to twenty. What do you think is the, is the, um, I, most beneficial number to have in a kindergarten?
Less is more.
I know, but, I mean, we know that they're much lower than, than what our, our, um, expectations are as regarding our contract, but a- as far as obtaining the kindergarten skills, what do you think is the, the, the number that is the most productive? Is there, I mean, is twenty the same as fourteen?
It is not. It is not. I, anywhere like fifteen to eighteen is, is an ideal varying classroom size. Um, when we're hitting eighteen, nineteen, twenty students, it's really hard. We're very, very busy. Um, and like I said, the behaviors that we're seeing are, are absolutely outweighing the academics at this point. Um, and that makes the classroom hard when there's twenty-two students and ten of those students are having a really hard time just sitting on the carpet or not flirting out or keeping our hands to ourselves, or, I mean, it runs the gamut of behaviors. Um, so again, that less is more, that attention is there for the teacher to be able to give that one-to-one support. Um, because we don't have aides in our classrooms unless the student requires services, right? So, um, it's, it's hard to manage behaviors and academics and students when you're at twenty-two students in a room.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
Um, you're doing a great job talking off the top of your head. Thank you for doing that. But you guys both asked some really, really good questions that I think if we get in, Kelly gave us so much information. But, um, it would have been nice for her to have those questions. Yeah, oh yeah. But you're doing a great job just kind of like pulling stuff right out. But some of that data, you know, getting that when you guys get the packet on Friday or Saturday or Sunday, or even Monday morning, so she can do a little, because that trending stuff would have been really good to put in here. I didn't think to ask you to put that in there, so thank you, board members, for thinking of that. Um, but yeah, so I think, you know, in the future, having those really good, because having data to kind of back up what you're saying anecdotally is awesome. And Kelly's also being very kind, I think, beyond, about some of the behaviors. Um, and she's smiling because she, her slide where she talked about being an academic support and being an extra pair of hands. She literally was at King School, I want to say, four or five days out of the week to start the year for, for a couple of months.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and we just found a teaching assistant willing to go in and be a safety aide and after fall break. But Kelly was filling that void for that classroom, so learning could happen for all the other students and for this, so this student could be in the classroom as much as possible. And I think we're seeing more students like the student that Kelly was supporting, who's been with grandma and at home, and not a Head Start, and not an early childhood, and not really anywhere. And so coming into kindergarten with literally no expectations for learning how to sit, how to li- how to walk, how to hold someone's hand in the hallway. All those things are just had to be re- taught. And we're seeing that as a pattern, unfortunately, and a trend. Um, and yeah, I don't know what to do about that. I think we do whatever we can for child find. We go out in the, like, you saw her slide where she's going to church, like, everywhere to child find some, to make sure our families know about Urbana Early Childhood. Or, and Head Start does the same thing. They're required to by the federal government to do child find. And so, and we do it for special education also. So we just miss kids, right? There are families who can't afford home daycare, you know, don't cha- qualify for childcare resource, whatever it might be. We're seeing more families show up to kindergarten with no previous experience, and that is a challenge. Um, and so I think just, it just takes the village, like so many people like Kelly who are just, and I'm not, and social workers are jumping in those spaces, resource teachers. Co-teachers are helping our teachers manage those things the first twenty days of school. So it, it really has administrators. It's really taking a team effort to help with those kiddos who show up, and they're like, oh, this is what school is.
This is school.
So, yeah. So thank you, Kelly.
I, I agree. I think you've done a great job, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
You're right.
Um, right, no.
I wasn't saying that in a negative way. I was just saying, your questions were really, really good, and I, I was like, wow, I wish we'd had those in the slides, so yes.
I, but I would like to say, and this is not, um, that I think as a board, we need to think about the resources needed at the kindergarten level. Because the kids from early childhood are going from a class size of ten with an aide, a teacher and an aide, to a class size of twenty with a teacher and no aide. And
What's up?
Ten or fifteen?
Early childhood?
Early childhood.
About fifteen and two aides.
Oh, fifteen. My, my mistake. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, but fifteen with an aide to, you know, no aide and, um,
And all day.
And
Half-day to all day.
Right, all, and it's a big jump for these kids. So for the kids who are coming in and haven't been in school before, and for the early childhood kids who are, some of them are still struggling. Um, I mean, I think that's something we've got to put in the back of our mind in order to get if, to make progress, um, because they just keep getting further behind them.
I think that's, um, another thing that I'm, I'm concerned about is not, if a student is, if his child isn't ready, um, we can't expect him to go a certain, or her to go a certain distance during the school year, so we have to have, you know, more. It's, it's harder on the teachers because they're expected to teach certain things and have their students achieve certain things. And if a child's not ready to learn, um, academically or behaviorally, it's, it's more difficult. But, um, the other thing I wanted to know is how, do you assess the, the students after, um, the initial assessment? How many, and how many times do you assess them during the year?
We do not do the screening again.
Mm-hmm.
We just use our M-class data, which is really to our DIBELS and our CKLA curriculum that we use, um, which gives our letter naming, the beginning sounds.
Same skills, then?
Yes, in a, just a different format.
Yeah, so now only do we have to be grateful for you and the work that you do, but the kindergarten teachers as well, because we know that they're, they have a very difficult job.
Yes, thank you.
Let us know what else we can do. Thank you.
Good questions. Good questions. Uh, anybody else? May I thank you, Kelly?
Thank you.
Uh, we do have action items tonight. Uh, first up is our consent agenda, uh, starting with, uh, eleven dot one, which are minutes from the September sixteenth, uh, business meeting, the September twenty-third District Parent Teacher Advisory Meeting, the October sixth Executive Session, October seventh Study Session, the October eighth Executive Session, and the October twenty-first Special Meeting. There is a list of personnel items that were in our, um, packet for eleven dot two, seeking approval. Uh, but there is a modification to the published list of personnel items that we'd like to make. Uh, so when this, this motion is made, we made, uh, requesting that, uh, under leave request, William Fisher is no longer requesting leave. Uh, eleven dot three is approval for hazardous areas for transportation. That's needed for state funding. Eleven dot four is a resolution authorized under directing the sale or disposal of personal property. Uh, this is a library reference table, a map case, and a single-door refrigerator. Eleven dot five, uh, new activity count for the class of twenty twenty-eight at Urbana High School. Is there a motion to, oh, first of all, does anybody wish to remove, uh, any one of these, uh, proposed, uh, consent agenda items from the consent agenda? Uh, hearing none. The chair would entertain a motion to improve the entire list of consent agenda, uh, items as read and with eleven dot two, uh, with a verbal amendment.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any, any further questions, comments, or discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Marabou?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Pulaski?
Yes.
And Member Sheryl?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes. Uh, moving on to our individual action items. Uh, first up is twelve dot one, our gifts. Uh, Fisher National Bank donated six hundred fifty dollars to the Urbana High School Wrestling Program. Sandra Smith Volk donated two hundred fifty dollars to the Urbana High School Mariachi Tigers, or T-Bears. Uh, Sherri Langendorf donated three digital point-and-shoot cameras, uh, for two hundred dollars batteries to Urbana High School. James Wang, Peoria Charter, donated a chartered bus for the sixth-grade center, Urbana Middle School softball team game in Bloomington, Illinois. Anna Ivy donated a hundred dollars to the Urbana High School Cross Country Team. Pam Schallenberger, John and Pat C. Pratt, and Frank Modica donated a replacement bench in memory of Marsha Lerner at Thomas Payne Elementary. Jackie Martin, Thomas Payne teacher, received a total of two hundred dollars from Diane, uh, Hergen, Hergenrother, uh, Laura and Chris Lyon to purchase school supplies for her classroom. The following UHS, uh, girls swim team supporters donated a hundred dollars or more. Uh, Brian Anga- Angaletti, uh, Dr. Jean Amber, Tracy Duffield, uh, Kristen and Paul Herb, Herb, sorry, Eberth, uh, Jack and Jane Franklin, uh, Wade and Angie Franklin, Jeff Burzley, and Becky Fuller, Anna Gresh, James Hanson, Chris and Virginia Layman, Susan Layman, Ned and Shirley Lewis, Tyler Milton, and Vicky Turnbull. Is there a motion to accept these gifts and send out the appropriate thank yous?
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Last up is, uh, press plus one nineteen, which we had, uh, discussed at a prior meeting. Um, is there a motion on the floor to accept the changes from press plus one nineteen?
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
At the last meeting, when we discussed this, I brought up some changes that I thought would be good. Um, and I was asked to send those changes to Lori, and I did, and I sent them to Lori, Paul and the superintendent, and I didn't hear anything back. I was wondering if you thought any of that could be
I don't make those decisions.
Included?
Send that to our attorneys. They proof all the, there's an attorney group that puts together press. Did you send them to Susan also, Lori? Okay, so, um, we can hold off on this.
Yeah, so
It's past due, but we can wait another, uh, couple of weeks.
Well, we have a, we have, we have a meeting a week from today, and we have a meeting three weeks from today.
To Susan. The lawyers put together that information, so because it is a, um, legal document, once we, you know,
Okay, so
We will send it to Susan.
So I would entertain a motion to definitely suspo- definitely postpone a vote on this item um, until the, the next, the next meeting unless we don't receive, uh,
Well, she's usually
Okay, until the November fourth, uh, meeting. Is there, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So this is a motion to definitely postpone a vote on this until
Right.
Our next week. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're
I guess. I think so.
It's a unanimous vote, so I think we're all in agreement.
So, but if I'm supposed to send it somewhere, could you
Lo, we already have it. It's just, it's just
Lori has it.
Oh, you
She will take care of that.
We just want to make sure that everything that you suggested is compliant with, with the others, you know, with, with state law.
Just has to be compliant with legislation, with school code, um, a lot, the labor laws, all kinds of things that attorneys look at that I don't.
Okay, so when, what I had sent to Lori, I had said was, you know, kind of quick and, you know, I just, I, I'm not sure that the wording is exactly wonderful.
So, that's where Susan will take it to make sure it's legally used and adapted to what you need.
Well, we, I don't, you know, Susan, and Susan will, will reply with, with, with a, a modification or if, if it needs to be modified, and then you can look at it and see if that really is, is the intent of, of, of what you wish to have.
And she may make a recommendation that we don't. I mean, there are times when we ask for changes and she'll say, I don't recommend that you do that because of this reason, right? Um, and so she may do that as well. I mean, I just don't want you to be surprised by that if she says, you can make that change if you want to, but I would recommend that you don't, and here's why. So, that happens sometimes, too.
Okay, so this will be, be, uh, reviewed again next week. Um, there is not a call in, uh, in the agenda for, uh, future special executive meeting, but we're, are we tentatively working on a expulsion hearing for for this, uh, to be November sixth? Um, again, so the others are meeting, a regular meeting a week from today, and then, uh, the meeting three weeks from today, which is November eighteenth. I will not be present, so, so Ben, you'll be, be chairing that meeting.
And that's the tax levy meeting. Just, that's our November business meeting. So if you have input on the tax levy, but you could go ahead and meet with Mary Ann, or since she won't be at that, I might suggest that. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you for John. One thing that I am, uh, working on with our principals is, um, and so be on your, I know you, I know it's hard when we're asking you to be present for so many other things in the evening, but, um, negotiations is coming, so um, we're getting final do-not-come-to-our-building dates and what built from our, uh, principals for our luncheons, because it is time for us to kind of start planning for negotiations, and part of our practice has been to have board members, um, be at the lunch periods. We only have two at a time, so we have a very specific schedule that we follow um, with times listed out. So hopefully you'll be receiving that in the next couple of days, and we'll make sure that you really look, you really know to go in. You'll have to sit with your calendar and say, I really want to go to King, or I really want to go to the sixth-grade center. I really want to go. And, um, and, and we don't ask that you go to every single building and to, um, multiple lunch periods, but we do ask that if there are buildings where you really want to be, that you, when we send that out, that you lock yourself in. Um, and they're all during our school's set lunch periods. So, you know, a lot of our schools, like some of the elementary schools, start at ten forty-five and they go until one o'clock. And we'll give you the breakdown of when the kindergarten teachers eat lunch, when the fifth-grade teachers eat lunch. So if you're interested in kindergarten and want kindergarten and want to talk to those teachers, you might slot yourself in for one of the kindergarten times. Um, and then we will make sure that there are only two of you there per time period. Does that make sense? So, um, we'll send you that spreadsheet.
Yeah, I was trying to chime in real quick. It's, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for the seven of us to hear concerns directly from the membership itself.
Yes.
As opposed to, the, the leadership, I think their leadership does a great job of representing them, but the hearing unfiltered directly from, um, the people on the front lines is, 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 I've always found it really, really helpful during the negotiation process.
And our role there, um, Angie and I go to several of them. Um, Mary Ann will be invited for the first time, and our role there is really to listen. We're not there to solve the problems of the world and problem solve everything, because we, we can't do because we, we can't do that when it's just two of you, right? Like you can't make a promise, the two of you at King, um, without the other board members being there. But our, our role really is to listen, um, take notes. You know, it's just like a, this, we, I like to call them listening sessions and, um, it, it's an opportunity, like Paul said, to just hear from everyone. And there'll be people there who are not UEA members, um, because it's their lunchtime and we're going to be in the teacher's lounge. So, um, that, that's just something to be on the lookout for this week. Okay, UHS boys soccer, so Keandre, I mentioned this, but I wanted to share a few pictures. This is just so much fun. I got these from, uh, Dr. We Mel, his son is on the team. And so, um, they will be heading to Washington tomorrow for sectionals matchup. I don't know who they play yet, I'll find that out, but, um, we're just really excited for their regional championship win. You can just see their excitement as well, so, um, kudos and let's go Tigers, great job. Um, intramural basketball started tonight, so I had a district, a couple of our district folks going around checking in on our teams. I have a couple of great pictures, but we have about a hundred fifth graders signed up. Um, we have six boy teams and three girl teams that started tonight, um, at all of our elementary schools practicing. And, um, we, this is a partnership with the, um, Health and Wellness Center with the Park District. So practices will be happening in our schools, um, in the evenings. And then we'll play games, um, at the Health and Wellness Center, um, on Saturday mornings. Um, and then we're going to have a tournament at the sixth-grade center, um, on December twentieth, that Saturday, before, uh, we close for winter break. And, um, all the fifth graders get to go there and see, wow, this is, this is where I'm going to be next year as a sixth grader. But they are going to act, also all play one another. Um, we'll have an actual basketball tournament for them. So, um, Ms. Carr is really excited about that and, um, it'll be a great way for all those kiddos and their families to kind of come together. We'll celebrate them with, you know, our participation certificate and all that. So we're really excited about this. And based on the response, our families are excited too, so. Um, and I want to thank all of our coaches. Um, we have parents who stepped up to coach, we have staff members who are also parents who stepped up to coach. Um, and we have some folks who don't have kids, who, um, don't even have, uh, students yet or children, that they just want to help our basketball program be great in the future, who stepped up to coach. So I want to thank all those folks. And then we also have supporters, like we have a couple of parents at some buildings who said, I will be in charge of making the schedules for this and I will help the coach send out emails. And so, uh, we're just really excited about the response that we've gotten from our, um, school community, so thank you. Um, the Day of the Dead Bike Ride, so most of you are probably on an individual email or somewhere with Kenita about this. So she spearheaded this, um, and she's of course been working with Lucia and our parent liaisons. And, um, this is for Dia de los Muertos, a Day of the Dead celebration. Um, we're having it in the community and I know some of the schools do their own special things as well. Um, UHS Tiger Mariachi will be out there and, um, it's a way for kind of everyone to come together away from their individual, um, school celebrations. So, um, thank you for, Kenita, for organizing this for us. Saturday was, last week was Pride Week and Saturday was the Pride Festival in downtown Urbana. Um, and so you can see some of our staff members, some of our students, um, from GSA and some of our, um, the gays, uh, Gay Straight Alliance groups, um, and some of our own staff who participated in the parade and it looks like they had a lot of fun out there, you can tell from the pictures. So thank you for everyone who helped kind of coordinate that. Um, Friday was United Nations Day and we celebrate United Nations Day, um, once a year. You heard that we have more languages represented, um, this year than we've had in a long time. Um, but we had twenty-five countries represented in the United Nations Day parade. So, um, as you'll see, the students in this picture represent the oldest child from that particular country, um, who they get to carry the flag in and out of the, uh, assembly. And it is just a great way to continue the, um, legacy of United Day, United Nations Day and celebrating the international multiculturalism that still exists at King. So, great job. And that is it.
The chair would then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll see you in one week.
They play Washington, okay.